All right, we're getting close.
Yeah, go ahead and record on both this way.
I'll start recording right here.
Oh, yeah, just on that.
That's right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, this is fine. It's on you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We're three o'clock? John, are you gonna start the meeting, or did you want me to? He can hear us.
Is that ready?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we are ready. Yes, we are ready. He's muted. John, can you unmute?
You're there now?
Yes, now we have you.
Or not yet.
Uh, we didn't hear anything, so you get to start, over.
Just lost everybody.
Okay, can you hear us?
There you are, there you are, you're back.
Okay.
Do we need to start over again?
Yes, please.
Okay, it is now October eighth, twenty twenty-four, at three oh one in the afternoon. This meeting is held by Commissioner Larson. The thinking point is Commissioner Norton at the Commission Chambers at one fifty-two East One Hundred North in rural New Cup. We'll start out with a prayer. And we'll have the pledge of allegiance, sorry, I don't read who that is.
Uh, the prayer will be Jeremy Raymond, and the pledge will be Barbara Simper.
Thank you.
Dear God and Heavenly Father, we're grateful to come before thee this beautiful Tuesday afternoon here in Unata County, and give thee thanks for many blessings. We're grateful for this great county in which we live, work, and play. And we ask thee to watch over and protect us, and bless us with the needed moisture for our area, and help subside the fires that are happening. And we're grateful for the military and our armed forces fighting for our freedom, watch over and protect them and their families. We ask thee also for a blessing upon the residences of Florida at this time, that they can be watched over and protected from the hurricane approaching. We're grateful for thy son Jesus Christ, what he did for us, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and as the republic for which it stands, one nation of the parable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, approval minutes, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, work session, October first, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Um, I would make a motion that we approve those minutes as on the agenda.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, or call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Will, how about your part warrants?
Okay, Commissioners, I have warrants from October third in the amount of nine hundred twenty-two thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. A few of them that was out of the ordinary on this one. Uh, there was a check to Basin Sports for nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. These were for night scopes for the Sheriff's Department. Also, there was a check to Gracie Global LLC for twenty-two thousand five hundred, uh, for the Sheriff's Department for their outreach program there. Job Engineering for thirty thousand two eighty-nine, this continues the Central Canal project. And we had a check to Scott Allred Paving, continued payment on the parking lot at Western Park for four hundred twenty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. And we also have a pass-through of revitalization funds to UNA Basin Association of Governments for one hundred eighty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. So those are the warrants, Commissioners. I do have one claim that I need to present, and that is the check to Gracie University for twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Check number three nine four six two zero.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mike?
Nope, that's the last one there.
Okay, can you call for a motion?
Um, I would make a motion that we approve the claim, as has been presented by Clerk Auditor Wilkins.
Any discussion? All right, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. We have tax matters, indigent abatements.
Okay, Commissioners, we have the twenty twenty-four indigent abatements. Uh, total abatement being presented this time is six thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and fifty-seven cents. Uh, there are fifteen total parcels, uh, and I present them for a fifty percent abatement of their taxes. And the six thousand nine eighty fifty-seven is fifty percent. And I have emailed this to all the Commissioners.
Okay. I, I would make a motion that we approve the indigent abatements, um, as presented by Clerk Auditor Wilkins.
Any discussion? There, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Recession for Board of Equalization?
Think, Son, you probably need to make a motion to recess into Board of Equalization. And when done, conduct the business there to reconvene.
Thank you. I make the motion to re, to convene into the Board of Equalization, and when finished with that business, reconvene in, or adjourn and reconvene into commission meeting.
Okay, Commissioners, the first one on there is the approval of Board of Equalization stipulations.
Do we need to vote on that first?
Oh, yes, sorry.
That's okay.
Let's get it out to the chair.
Yeah.
I know.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Board of, now you're ready now, okay. Board of Equalization, uh, the, the stipulations are stipulations that have been, that the assessor's office has met with each of the property owners and have made a stipulation with them. Uh, total stipulated value loss net change is three million seven hundred ninety thousand and twenty-four dollars, that is market value. So that is the stipulations for approval. And also, the hearing officer that we hired, we had a Board of Equalization last week with Mr. Manning. Jeremy Manning was the hearing officer on it, and met with the landowners and the assessor's office. In his recommendations, he got back to us, serial number zero five eighty-three zero zero seven five. His recommendation was to uphold the value of the county assessor, county assessor put on that value. Uh, serial number zero five zero eight three zero zero seven nine. Uh, recommendation on that was to reduce the value from sixty-three thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars down to fifty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. And the other two items that are on that have already been addressed in a prior Board of Equalization. So with that, Commissioners, I present those two reports for the twenty twenty-four Board of Equalization, and request approval for those.
Any questions?
No, I would make a motion that we approve the stipulations as presented by Clerk Auditor Wilkins.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Hold me back in, uh, for adjourned or equalization, or adjourned for permission. All right, Jenny, rural county grant?
Jenny Byrd, Purchasing and Grants Department. I have a rural county grant contract from the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. Um, this grant program is intended to aid county governments in managing economic development opportunities. And the grant amount is two hundred thousand dollars, and the contract period is fiscal year twenty-five, so that's July first, twenty twenty-four, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, the Economic Development Advisory Board met, and they have identified eleven projects they want to do this year. Travis Campbell's reviewed this contract. Um, it's been sent to John Serman's office. I haven't heard back from him yet, but it's, um, an annual contract. It's the same one as last year, the same standard language. So I'm asking the commission to approve this grant contract.
Okay, do you have nothing?
No.
Okay. Call for a motion?
Um, I don't know if we need to make a contingent. I, I would make a motion that we approve this grant, as has been presented, uh, with the contingency that the attorney, county attorney, reviews it before.
Yeah, before signature, that's fine. I can get with it when it gets back.
Okay, who needs to sign that, Jenny?
You do. Commissioner Larson, I think just the chair.
Aye.
Aye, rural county grant passes with the stipulation, it's going to be a dirty one for also.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, everybody, Fire Prevention Week, what's the motion?
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, so, we try to do this, I try to do this every year. Uh, we try to come in October and talk about Fire Prevention Week. And so I sent a proclamation, uh, Unata County, twenty twenty-four proclamation to the Commissioners. Uh, what Fire Prevention Week is, it's a nationally observed week, uh, throughout the United States, and it's done from Sunday to Saturday, in which October the ninth falls. Uh, on October the eighth, we had the Great Chicago Fire back in eighteen seventy-one, and it caused a lot of destruction and killed a lot of lives. So since nineteen, I believe, twenty-eight, the president at that time, uh, declared, uh, the October ninth, whatever week that falls, to be, uh, recognized as Fire Prevention Week. So, uh, do you want to read this, John, or Son, yeah? Or do you want me to read it?
Go ahead, you can read it.
Okay, I'll read it. Says, uh, whereas the county of Unata is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our state, and whereas fire is a public safety concern both nationally and locally, and homes are the location where people are greatest risk from fire. Whereas home fires killed more than two thousand seven hundred people in the United States in twenty twenty-two, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to three hundred and sixty thousand home fires. Roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes either with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. Whereas working smoke alarm cut, alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. And whereas smoke alarms sent smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. Whereas Unata County residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. Whereas Unata County residents will make sure their smoke alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. Whereas Unata County residents should test smoke alarms at least once a month. Whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared, and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Unata County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Unata County residents are responsive to public education measures, and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas the twenty twenty-four Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, serves to remind us the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Therefore, I, John Larson, Chair of the Unata County Commission, do hereby proclaim October sixth through the twelfth, twenty twenty-four, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this county, and urge all the people of Unata County to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Unus, Unatus Fire and Emergency Services. So, yeah, I know that was a lot there, so, um, we, uh, we've, uh, appreciate the county letting us set up our, a banner out on the front lawn. We also have some gift bags down front, in the front foyer down there. We've also been visiting with the, uh, um, radio stations and media outlets to help spread the word, and so, yeah.
Great, do they, like, this seems to focus on smart smoke alarms.
Mm-hmm.
Do they have something different each year that they tend to focus on in their letter?
Yep, yep, so this year's theme is Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You. So, yeah, there's a new theme every year they come out with, so. Smoke alarm seems to be hit quite a bit, and then also kitchen fire safety as well, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I guess we need to make a motion?
Motion to, uh, accept the proclamation?
Um, so moved.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Please, people, whoever hears about this, please pass it on to your friends, check those smoke alarms. If you have any questions, please contact the fire district, because Jeremy can help you out. Okay, Tanya, two thousand twenty-four, county employee abatements.
Oh, I forget, I don't have to plug in. All right, Tanya Craven, Human Resource Office. Um, we are gonna go over the health benefits, medical, dental, vision, EAP, life, disability. Um, we have been in meetings for the last little while regarding, uh, multiple options, and limited them down to what we're presenting today. We're looking at Cigna, who we're currently with, and, uh, the level funded option, and then also self-funded, and the two different, um, companies that we're looking at utilizing, and how we would be able to possibly go into self-funded, um, this calendar year is what, going into twenty twenty-five. So with Cigna, the level funded option that they've brought to the table is to, uh, with a six point three percent, um, premium renewal, and that is of the four million seven fifty-three nine oh seven. Regents to go to self-funded with utilizing a captive program. Um, that is a, um, program that's going to utilize multiple companies to cover the costs, to allow the county to, um, go into self-funded. It's gonna, will have that hundred thousand dollar and twenty-five thousand dollar kind of collateral share buy-in that you see on that bottom line. I don't have a pointer, but if you look at total first-year collateral plus share cost, um, that brings that cost to five million five sixty-nine seven sixty-nine. And then Maritane is the other self-funded program, and that is Aetna. And the cost there is five million five hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-two. And then the cost per, um, program that we've built out with the same plans are the shown below. Um, we've also looked at the possibility of going to two plans for the next calendar year as well. Um, that's not, um, here, but we've looked at going and utilizing the three thousand two fifty traditional plan, and then the high deductible plan, and possibly not continuing with the thousand dollar traditional plan into the twenty twenty-five calendar year. Um, looking at these plans moving forward, we have gone back and forth, pros and cons. The captive collateral is a, I believe we've talked with our Clerk Auditor. He seems to have, have a positive, um, opinion towards being able to move back into self-funded. Um, there's both programs, whether you utilize Blue Cross or you utilize Maritane. The difference with Maritane is they use the TPA, so the third-party, um, billing, where Regents, uh, does their own billing within, so there's the two different avenues. Um, it's been discussed that with utilizing the Maritane with the third party, that there might be deeper, um, in, or deeper discounts that we could find pharmaceutically. Um, but that's objectively where we've utilized Blue Cross in the past. Um, I know Clerk Auditor has opinions as far as being able to utilize them and having those relationships there as well. I don't think that either way, with either one of these groups, that we could have, I'm just hearing that feedback, so I apologize. It's kind of, um, I don't think that either insurance company would be, uh, a hard or a negative approach going forward. Um, we've set ourselves up with a good year to be able to move back into self-funding, and utilizing the captive, uh, approach is a good approach to kind of start stepping us back into self-funding. Um, but also, Cigna has brought a very good, um, a, a, a very good percentage to the table, as far as financially, to continue with us with also all of the benefits that they provide. They are giving us that ninety thousand dollar administrative, and then the thirty thousand that they give us for wellness, and then the fifteen thousand that they give us for the tech. So that also pays for, obviously helps offset the administrative costs. It pays for our wellness program, and it also has paid for our EAP program. So we can't also just sweep that to the side when we're looking at how we want to pursue the next year, uh, when we're looking at cost for our benefits. When you look at across-the-table costs, um, there's not a substantial difference between the Cigna renewal and the Maritane. It's within two hundred, I've got my notes here, around two hundred and some thousand dollars between the two. With Regents, it's a little bit substantially more between Cigna and Regents. Um, so I would believe this is just up to the commission as to how they would like to pursue, if they think that we're ready to start moving towards self-funded again, or if they want to stay another year with Cigna. Hello? Do we lose John?
I'm back.
Oh.
You can try hanging up all the other door.
Oh, goodness.
Call for a motion?
Um, yes, we did ask a lot of questions and researched a lot. We felt like, um, I felt like this was a good time to look at the self-funded option.
I agree.
As, after visiting extensively with our brokers.
Yes.
And also, um, the costs may be up a little bit this time, but I'm looking also into the future and feel like, uh, insurance rates and the percentage they go up every year always increases, sometimes double digits.
Mm-hmm.
I'm hoping that if we move to the self-funded, we have a little more control over that.
I have appreciated that as well, being able to.
And I am, that's what I am hoping for.
Mm-hmm.
So, um.
So then it would just be the decision of, of which, um, company, whether it would be Regents, Blue Cross, or Maritane with Aetna?
Okay, and I do know, one of the notes from the past is we did have a successful self-funded insurance program in the past.
Absolutely.
And so, um, I feel com- comfortable moving forward with making a, uh, motion that we go self-funded with Maritane.
Okay.
For the twenty twenty-five year.
Okay.
Call for a vote? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so moving forward with our next point of business then would be dental. Um, and if we're going to be, obviously then moving forward, self-funded with Maritane, um, looking at self-funded. Oh, yep. Where is my?
Bottom.
Right there. How's that, is that better? Sorry, it's huge on my side, is it better for you now? Okay, I'll just, is that too much? Let's see, a little much. Scroll over, my, there we, that, there we're good, okay. All right, so Delta Dental would be the next, if we're moving away from Cigna, when we were reviewing, would be my recommendation for our area that we look at to move forward with for our dental program for self-funded.
We would stay the same, it looks like, our, we would have no increase, it would stay the same.
Yeah, it would, there would be zero increase self-funded, yeah.
And I know we talked a little bit about EMI, um, and I visited with, um, our brokerages recently on that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think we are utilizing, are we utilizing, uh, Cigna uses, utilizes EMI or Del- Delta?
It's Del.
Or neither?
Well, in our area, it's.
Cigna utilizes their own dental network.
But it's similar to one of these, right?
Delta, Delta Dental's probably has.
Go, go to the mic. Delta, yeah, Delta Dental is the.
Come to that mic right there, please.
You won't have the feedback. Yeah, and Delta Dental is the, the similar network.
Yeah, Del, Tim King, GBS Benefits. Um, Delta Dental is one of the largest, if not the largest dental, uh, provider in the country. They have a national network, just like all the other dental carrier companies do. And we find that they're very well-recognized amongst the, the dental providers, and especially in our area, because a lot of the dentists will accept insurance, but they're not necessarily dental providers in rural markets. That's like you and I talked about, Commissioner, is that we make sure that that out-of-network benefit is sufficient, and takes care of our, uh, employees at the county that choose to not see a Delta Dental provider, but they can still choose another dentist and have a, uh, significant reimbursement on their dental procedures.
Thank you.
So I think we're ready to call for a.
Um, I would make a motion that we approve Delta Dental for our dental carrier.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next. Um, okay, so vision is going to be a little different because there wasn't, oh, now I've gotta go a little smaller, so I can get up first. So with moving away from Cigna, um, we have all of the fully insured companies, the only, uh, really self-funded that had been quoted out was the EMI, but Med, IMED, I believe, or was it MedLife, was the, IMED was the, um, the, um, provider that would have stayed the, within the same network as Cigna, um, even as the fully insured, it would still have the same type of coverage as, uh, moving forward.
Okay, so do we, we not know what that would be self-funded, or is it the same as what it's showing fully insured?
It, okay. This one got tricky for me because of we, when we were doing the switch. So that's why I asked Tim to talk about the vision.
So, so on the vision, is that, it's still on?
Yeah.
So, so on the vision, we have the fully insured quotes, obviously we see the Cigna, your current vision carrier, the rate hold, but if we're moving away from Cigna on the medical and dental, it cannot stand alone as just vision coverage with Cigna, so we have to move the, the vision. IMED is at a minus point two-two percent over current premiums, it is a fully insured, uh, vision plan. We can go back, Commissioner, and get some self-funded vision quotes quickly on this, and kind of see where that comes in at. I, we would assume, the one thing that we don't have, we can dig into it, and Cigna's not real good at giving us vision experience like we do when we go through the reports with medical and dental. Um, IMED, I believe, is better at giving us the dental, or excuse me, the vision claims. And so we would either suggest we get the self-funded vision quote, or for this year, we stay on the fully insured vision, pull those claims from IMED, look and see what kind of utilization we have, and then propose a self-funded vision plan for, for next year renewal time.
Okay, now EMA show, EMI shows quite a decrease in self-funded, is that because of the plan?
No, that's because all they're charging you is just an administration-only fee.
Right.
So an amount just to process.
Okay.
The claims, and so that has no claims funding amount in that, it's just their administration fee in order to, so what we would need to add to that is what we would project your vision claims to be on top of the administration costs.
Okay. What is today? I don't believe we have a meeting.
No, we have to do a special.
So we may need to do a special meeting once we get that information on the vision.
Commissioners, with the results of, historically, I would definitely go self-funded on your, on the vision. We need to massage and see what the rate would need to be, but you have very limited liability there.
Right.
So if we're, we're doing the other two, let's do this and figure out what we need to be for the premium, and move forward as self-funded for all three options.
And can we just do a vote to acknowledge that we were going to move self-funded with the vision with the carrier to be determined, or do we have to determine?
I agree with Mike, there is very, obviously with vision, there's very limited exposure there, you know what your exposure is because you have limitations on the plan. So if that's the direction you want to go with the vision as well, we can get those turned around quickly.
Okay.
Okay.
So I, I can make a motion that we would go self-funded on the vision, and then after we receive the information from our broker, we will make that decision in a meeting.
Right, but knowing that we're going to move forward with the self-funding. Okay, and then that way we can also start building on the back end that we need to, once we get that information.
That was a motion.
With vision. Oh, yes, mm-hmm.
And we will postpone vision until we get further information.
Right, we are going to go self-funded, that's my motion, to go self-funded, but we just need to get more information on the different carriers.
Yeah, we'll name the carrier.
To decide who the carrier is at a later time.
Okay, so we have to go ahead on the self-funded and the vision.
Mm-hmm.
No, I'm sorry, dental, and then depending on the vision.
Mm-hmm.
Is that your motion in a nutshell?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, the vision was our tricky one because of what was going on with the other plans. The EAP program, where we're moving to self-funded, we will need that, the, to be funded now through the county. This typically is around twelve hundred dollars a month, so this is Blumquist Hill, so we'll need to make sure that we have that money set aside and approval to continue this EAP program because it's very beneficial, and we have highly utilization for this program. So I am asking that the county approves our EAP program through their self-funded as well.
I know we approved this one last year.
Yes.
But we had different ones to look at. Has anything really changed as far as that?
No, the only thing that's changed is that the tech credit that we had from Cigna paid for it.
Okay.
Now this year, we, obviously we won't have that, so we will need the county's self-funded insurance to cover the cost of it.
So I would make a motion.
My suggestion's going to be put the numbers together and let's look at it, budget, next year. Is that possible?
Yes. Historically, Blumquist has been the EAP program for the county, so I would just encourage you to move forward with continuing to provide this benefit to the employees.
You don't have any idea what that cost?
I would ask for fifteen thousand dollars a year to fund it. Okay.
Is that a possibility?
Mike's moving forward.
Commissioners, where that's a three dollar ninety-seven cents, I would suggest we just put that as part of our funding rate that we fund it.
Okay.
And so each department will absorb that in their budgets for.
Is that how you did it in the past?
That's how we've always did it.
Oh, okay. I didn't know how you did it in the past, so.
The what?
We paid for it out of interest funds before.
Oh, okay.
Out of the self-funded insurance, so, so that's what I would do on this, and to build it back up, is the three dollar ninety-seven cents per employee, just the family premium, two-party, whatever.
It's how, it goes through that way? Okay.
Just include that as part of them.
A part of the premium, okay.
It still comes up almost the same. So do we need a motion to continue the Blumquist Hill?
Yes.
EAP program, EAP. I would make that motion. Would, I, I would say, and we would, would fund that at fifteen thousand dollars?
Well, Mike has said to add that three dollars and ninety-seven cents to the premium of the insurance, so at that point, it would just be part of the premium cost of the insurance.
Okay. That's my mo- motion then.
Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Lovely. Thank you, John. I only have ten more slides, John.
Okay.
Awesome. There's a lot, because we're changing a lot. Life and disability, so this will, I want to just, I'm actually going to move ahead to our one chart that you guys looked at. The reason for a slight change in this chart is to be able to fully fund at the sixty-six point six-seven percent. I don't know if you remember this slide, this is if we have employees that are needing to utilize their long-term disability, and to be able to fund their salaries at that percent. So the cost of that will change just minimally, and so just recognizing that in the overall cost for the LTD. And we had talked about it a little bit, but there really hadn't been, obviously because with, it was administrative conversations about whether or not we were going to increase, provide that increase, or if we were going to keep it at where we were and not go ahead and utilize that increase to fund those minimum, there's four staff that are go above that sixty-six point six-seven percent that we are at currently. So I just need a vote if we're going to fund the additional increase to cover that additional cost.
And you did explain that's long-term disability.
Mm-hmm, that's for long-term disability, yes, the payroll change.
Did you say you had the amount?
Yes.
You said minimal increase, but do you have the amount?
Oh, let me go down. It's right up here. Oh, I'm hitting the wrong button, arrow. It is eighteen, eighteen fifty, right there. Eighteen oh five twenty-nine, that's the additional increase.
For the full year?
Yes.
Okay. I would make a motion that we approve to cover all the employees.
Yeah, there's, would be only the four that we're needing to do that slight increase for.
Right, so I'm making the motion to make sure we're covering all the employees with an increased cost of one thousand eight oh five twenty-nine.
Yes, thank you.
For limited, I mean for limited.
Yeah, long-term.
For long-term disability.
Mm-hmm.
Call for vote for a, call for?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let me look and see. That's just going, okay, then the rest of my slides are our supplemental benefits. Those benefits are the plans that we provide to the employees that are just additional plans that the employees are provided during open enrollment, that are the, our accidental, supplemental accidental plan renewal, our critical illness, our hospital indemnity, and then we've already gone over the employee, but these are the plans, there's no rate changes to these, we'd just like to continue to offer them. We have quite a few employees that participate and have benefited when they've had these things come into their life events, and have been able to get those reimbursements due to having this coverage. So just the approval to continue on with these supplemental plans as part of our open enrollment.
I was going to say, but these are optional.
Yeah, these are all optional.
We're not providing these, the county is not.
No, the county, these are no cost to the, the county whatsoever, these are just part of our open enrollment and supplemental plans that are provided to them.
Okay. I would make a motion that we offer these optional plans for the employees, as has been presented.
Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I believe that's everything. I would like to do one shout-out today. We had our wellness fair, and my team, Jen and April, did an incredible job. They put a lot of work into that, and a lot of prizes. We had several people here today that were able to go down there and participate in that, and I just want to recognize them, though, I'm going to try and get them out here in our next commission meeting. We've also won an award for work site wellness from Cigna. We've run awards from work site net wellness from the state for our wellness program, and so I'll be bringing them in in our next commission meeting, so have those awards presented to the county, and they're doing a great job. I think it's helping out with our morale, it's helping out with our renewals that we're being able to get from these carriers, and our wellness program is a huge asset. So I will also be asking and talking about that as part of my budget for the next year as well. So, anyway, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we approve, we have just, as we stated in a previous meeting, we combined our historic preservation with our Western Heritage Museum Board, and so now they are the Historic Preservation and Heritage Museum Advisory Board. We needed to appoint three members to this board since the term had expired of the three previous members. We did put those, that, out to the public, and we received applications, and so at this time I would like to appoint Leann Denzer, Christine Cooper, and Lauren Anderson to fill those three vacant positions. They will run till December of, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven.
May I make a motion to approve that? Any discussion? Okay, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And now we're going to go into public comment, since he doesn't have this.
What was the term on those?
Well, those three had expired in, as of December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, but where we combined the boards, they're just going to be appointed as of today.
Oh, is there just a?
But they will go through December, there's three. They will go through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-seven. There are three other members that their term does not expend, expire until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I need, the twenty twenty-seven, I didn't hear come out.
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry. The next item is public comment, and Commissioner Larson doesn't have this, so he's asked me to read. The public comment reminders. Public comment is a time for public comment, not public debate. The county will listen to the comments made and take them into consideration. The county will not be responding to comments or answering questions. Comments made might not be something the county has the power to act on. This is a recorded public meeting. If someone would like to make a comment, they will need to wait until the microphone is available and state their name for the record. Please be respectful, no interrupting, and please wait your turn, turn. We would like to allow for fifteen minutes, so roughly three minutes per person, if there's anyone who would like to come forward. One thing I will say with this, we are working on answering questions that have been asked in public meetings previous, and we will be presenting those, hopefully when we have the next commission meeting.
Um, yeah.
So Mark Caldwell, thank you for the opportunity to ask you. This is the third week in a row I've appeared before you and spoke, and asking you to have a public meeting to discuss the pros and cons, and why you need the sales tax increase. It's now been a hundred and forty days since you passed the resolution to increase the sales tax, and in those hundred and forty days you've not said a word about why this needs to be, we need this new tax. So I'm going to quickly go over some of the things that I presented before. This, this slide, you can see, in twenty twenty-three, when property taxes were looked to be raised by the commission, we were told that the county was going broke because of actions of prior commissioners. Then, and that's why we needed property tax increase. Then we, when we looked at the results from twenty twenty-three, we see that you added seven point eight million dollars of unrestricted cash, four hundred and thirty thousand of restricted cash. All, your general fund had a surplus for the year of two million, municipal services had a surplus. Overall, you had eight million dollar surplus in government funds and three million dollar surplus, and this is just for the one year, and it adds to the, the balances you had before. Then I went over the pub, public safety, and showed that since twenty twenty-one, in twenty twenty-one, your public safety had a surplus of eight hundred seventy-nine thousand. In twenty twenty-two, you had a million dollar surplus, and in twenty twenty-three, you had one point two nine million dollar surplus. That's a surplus of budget compared to actual. So you, you budgeted a million to more than you needed, you didn't spend it. So it's confusing to me why this is needed. Now I've got to get back to where I was. Okay, so in the proposition, there's a, an argument for it that you make, and it says, "Uona County Sheriff's Office is recently funded by contracts," and it goes on to say that it's funded by cash reserves, by your savings account. And I, I went back and looked, and you've not used any, any cash savings. I mean, I went twenty nineteen, you didn't use any, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, you've never had this problem before. You've been running surpluses. So my question is, what happened this year? And, and I think that'd be really useful information if you'd answer that question for the public. Something that obviously has happened this year, you're saying that this year you're going to have to use three point four million in savings, and in twenty twenty-five, you're saying you're going to have to use like two million and one million out of those two funds. Let's remember the words that were spoken from, right from here by John Larson in September of twenty twenty-two.
Gentlemen, you're up there to represent to the public, not your own special interests or your own concerns. Those are the things that bother me a whole bunch. I don't think that we're being honest with the people. I think that's a big problem. You don't listen to the people, and.
So those were the words spoken by Commissioner Larson back in, before he was a commissioner, and I, you know.
Your time's up, sir.
Let's listen to the public, thank you.
Thank you. Can we get a copy of those for?
You bet, yeah.
Thank you.
And Steve Evans has agreed to do a radio show, if you want to come and do that, it'll be next week. And Steve Evans has agreed to do a radio show, if you want to come and do that, it'll be next week. But the sponsors of it'll be there, if you want to be there.
Thank you. I know we have put some information out on social media, and we will be putting more out for the public. And then we will, like I said, we are trying, we are working on answering questions. It's on, as far as I know, it's at least on Facebook, and it's on our website, I believe, on our Facebook page. Any other comments? Hey, there's no other comments, John.
Okay, I'll call for a vote. Question two, return.
Aye, so move.
Okay, return.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Right, thank you.